I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the board meeting of July 8th. Hope you all have a great weekend. Weather was great. Just a reminder that if there's an emergency exit out in New York City, which in this case before the mayor, once you get out, just go to your vehicle, stay with your vehicle. It's also directed by an emergency service personnel as to what is next. Also, this is a non-spoken building, so if you must, not to do it here, you must do it outside. And Phil's clerk.
Yes, good evening and happy Fourth of July. I just want to put you on the board meetings of June 24th, 2013.
Motion to accept a present?
Motion.
Second. Any changes, additions or deletions? More in favor? I'm not so carried. Those appear to be...
For bills per period total, $405,967.41. Top five. Gladfelter Insurance, $37,758.50. That's the management fee for our workers' compensation policy. H2M, $32,170.42 for civil engineering. Eastern Misos, $13,466.92 for land build. Global Boncicello, $13,022.57 for diesel fuel. And Spray, $10,815.29 for gasoline. For a total of $107,233.70.
Total bills for the period four, $5,967.70. Motion to accept a present?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? More in favor? I'm not so carried.
Just one additional item. There are some transfers cleaning up against some accounts, which we have to... It's clear we have approval on this.
Motion to accept a present?
No.
Second.
Second.
More in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Paul's here.
Okay, you have one public hearing tonight. Notice is hereby given at public hearing on Monday, July 8th, 2013, 6:00 p.m., 14 Beta Street, Patchogue, New York, by the Village Board and the Incorporated Village of Patchogue, to amend section 435-14.1 to provide a moratorium to consider requiring advocates in the D3 zone to provide parking when seeking to intensify their use, converting uninhabitable space to habitable space, increasing the footprint or square footage of existing buildings, or increasing their occupancy. By proposal, Calhoun, which is on file with the Office of Village Clerk, at said public hearing, if persons interested will be given the opportunity to leave.
As we all know, there's been a tremendous amount of discussion about parking in the village over the last six months. I said to Attorney Egan earlier today, when I first came into office in 2004, one of the things that Mayor Einstein said is he had gotten a grant for the paving of the Church Street parking lot. It was interesting, it was closed down for two solid days, we didn't get one complaint because there was nobody using the lots, the work being in lots. And that lot stayed closed while they paved and redid it two solid days. If we close a lot now for two solid days, I don't want to be around and Patty gets the calls, where am I going to park? So, we've been getting a lot of requests as of late for changes of uses of buildings and expansion, which is wonderful. Many of them by some of the same people that are complaining about lots are looking to expand their businesses, which you want expansion. You don't want to stop people from growing their business and being better than they are. But when you take a look at the fact that we have, we've got a part of 2,000 spaces, I think this was another gap, 2,100, 2,100 spaces in the new village that were built in 1960. And that, at the time they were built, they were built for the uses that were on Main Street at the time. And I think those of you that have come to meetings, the person say, in prior times, places such as Chan's, which is now the Brick House, to hardware store, the second floor was storage. The first floor, you had the Chan's family that worked, it was five or six people, couple of kids working. Maybe they had five or six customers at any given time, probably massive use of the building at any given time, maybe 10 cars. Now it's 45 employees and you can see a 200 use change, the use of the lot changes. Where you have Public House, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, it was a men's clothing store, pay seven. Again, five or six people, there were dozens of customers at any given time, 10, 12 cars. With the Village of the Idiots. And they're expanding now, they're expanding into other areas. That other area was McCabins, a men's store, six to eight, maybe including the tailors. Again, same type of thing, they maybe had massive use at any given time, 10, 12 cars. They're expanding into what was McCabins, we're probably 50 to 75, which would therefore create parking need of 30 to 35 cars. So, we need to be able to get some control, be able to look at what's happening on Main Street, work with the chamber, work with the BID, work with the people on the issue, how are we going to provide the additional parking? Deputy Mayor, we'll talk a little later about parking uses as they relate to meters, we will talk with that, but it's all part of the larger, larger series of decisions that have to be made. You know, we have, you know, the Oak Street Lot, I see Reverend Walters here, you know, I have talked about parking at various times. You have one side of the parking lot, you have Congregational Church, the other end of the parking lot, you have the Temple. Now, obviously, their services are at different times, but the use in the parking lot, when they have activities in their yard, how do we accommodate to make sure that the uses are for what they need, the congregation, what the Temple needs, what the stores on Main Street need? You know, and the retail set, how do... I speak to Ed Rossovich at the Elks Hall, and they have a Friday night function. It becomes very difficult. I mean, these are, these are what progress gives you, it gives you another set of problems that we didn't have. Trustee Krieger always says, you know, parking problems have to space as well. We don't have too many left, we have parking problem. So, the intent of this is to give us an opportunity to catch our breath, take a look at a parking place. Because once Tri-Tec is completed, which will be about this time next year, we'll have a plan in place to make sure that it takes us into the next 20 years, 25 years. I always figure, I look at this board that's here, there's a lot of talent, there's a lot of talent in the community. You go back to the Jack Moose Center days of Sweets, Rob Wallower days, George Lecter, Tractor Goon, Elect Tractor, the Anthony Julians, those that put together that original parking plan, tremendous amount of talent. We have a tremendous amount of talent on this board, in this community, whether it be the Chamber of the Bid, to be able to come up with a plan within six months. We limited it, this is limited to 180 days. The end of this 180 days, and it will be under the direction of trustee Devlin, and trustee Hilton lost the word, but I'm on this side, I appreciate it, is to put together that plan that says, okay, this is what we're doing for the next eight months, this is what we're going to purchase, this is how we're going to get there. By that point in time, there'll be a parallel committee. The parking committee itself will be working in conjunction with that, say, okay, this is the kind of revenue we're beginning to generate, this is where we consider we can go, these are the things that we need to purchase, this is what we need to get done. We need, number one, to kind of slow the train down a little bit. You know, we're sorry to run ourselves over, you shouldn't do that, but that being said, come to the board.
Thank you, it's an excellent idea. Any objections to the way it's written? So, we'll put those six months put together.
One of the things that we did is this was passed out to sub-county planning. Would you read it to the record with sub-county?
Just the resolution.
Yeah, just the resolution. Sub-county planning takes more, will, from villages, we, before we can pass a moratorium, it goes to the sub-county planning commission. Sub-county planning commission reviews what are those objectives are, the reasons for it, and then will make comment to it. Neither approve or deny it, we always have the right to override a denial, we don't like it because it puts you in conflict. But in this case, I'll let Lucille read it to the record.
Okay. Resolution of the sub-county planning commission, whereas pursuant to sections A14-14 through A14-25 of the Sub-County Administrative Code, referral was received on May 31st, 2013, at the office of the Sub-County Planning Commission, with respect to the application of moratorium on certain construction and use and occupancy applications in D3 located in the Village of Patchogue. Whereas said referral is considered by Sub-County Planning Commission at its meeting on July 30, 2013, now therefore be it, resolved that Sub-County Planning Commission hereby approves and adopts the report that's set and may as amended as a report for the commissioner. Be it further resolved pursuant to section A14-16 of Sub-County Administrative Code and section 239m6 of General Municipal Law, but if referring municipality within 30 days after final action, shall file a report with Sub-County Planning Commission. And if said action is contrary to this recommendation, set forth the reasons for such contrary action. Be it further resolved that Sub-County Planning Commission approves said referral subject to the following contract. A moratorium is, from one perspective, the most extreme land use action a municipality can take because it suspends the rights of landowners to use their property. From the perspective of Sub-County Planning Commission, unlimited or narrowly scoped moratorium generally does not involve regional or intercommunity impacts of an adverse nature and generally are considered matters for local determination. It is the belief of the Sub-County Planning Commission that the 180-day moratorium, when combined with the prior 180-day moratorium, is more adequate to analyze zoning, land use, density, and parking requirements, and to formulate a zoning and parking scheme for the village business district. Sub-County Planning Commission encourages the adoption of these regulations sooner than opposed to the moratorium.
Mr. Reed, any comment? No, that's it. And any other comment by the board? Public comment?
I've been listening to you. The moratorium, I don't know if it's going to help us or hurt us in that aspect. A tax levy on employees over, after the fifth employee on these major businesses will relieve 80 percent of this village's problems. The vast majority of this parking problems in this village are created by employers. There are six or eight major employers in the other village who take up a third, between a third and half of the available parking. To Church Lot, the lot behind the theater, I don't know the name of it, and a lot behind the library. That is, if you go through those lots, five, six o'clock, the restaurants, bars are empty or half full, the lots are busting at the seams on any given night, especially Wednesday through Sunday, Wednesday through Saturday night. If we put, if there was a, as opposed to a moratorium, let these businesses expand, get their employees out of these lots.
But the thing is, we need to come up with places to put those other lots, to put those employees.
You know, you have, behind Bravo, the lot over, behind Courthouse, behind Bill's, the parking is available for the employ... I work in the city, I have no sympathy for these employers and their employee problems. You know, what I go through, you get to work on a daily basis and park. And these people act like walking a block is going to kill their employees.
Let's get, we say, we don't have a parking problem, we have a walking problem.
Absolutely. You know what, and I think, you know what, put a levy, forget the moratorium, put a levy on any business that's over five employees, of $5 per employee, and see how fast these employees move out of the lots. And relieve the congestion and the calls of this village, and board must get it, regardless of this thing. And these smaller businesses that we're losing, we've lost one, we're losing another, might survive until we can get these 300 new patrons in this village to make, get them all, keep all these businesses alive. But we're, the big, we're mixing great argyllium.
We think if they want the red lines, all the Terry Street behind the library, we put in the red parking spaces, so those parking spaces, if the intention was to prevent people from parking before, was it nine or 10?
Ten.
So that way it leaves it open, because by then the assumption is, just the daytime employees are already there. And I get complaints from people, so I live in Patchogue, and I work in Patchogue, and how dare you tell me I can't park even where I work? It's a lot of, you know, and, look, I go into the city all the time to work, I don't mind walking, I walk all the time.
I do, I agree.
I don't even try to come into Main Street, I walk, you know.
I mean, I have no choice but to, you know, come out of Main Street. I frequent, the majority of the businesses in this village, either shopping, dining, and going through these lots, undoubtedly, it's not, it is, we do not have a near the parking problem that is being projected to this board. We have employers that are refusing to work with the board. And there has yet to be a single business come to, in this village, who hasn't needed something from this board. A street, a sign, a 15-minute zone, something. They come in here and hand over, and this village does, they're bent over backwards best to accommodate any new business, yet we get no friendly neighborhood response back from them. And that, to me, is the appalling thing. So, if you think the moratorium is going to help, you know what, put it in play. I think a levy on these businesses will...
But that, that might be one of the results that comes out of the moratorium itself, believe it or not.
You know.
At least if we have, and the more, it's not to exceed 180 days. It's, the 180 days is a massive way to go. They could come back with recognition, 30 to 60 days, they'll put us in a position to do exactly what you're talking about. Maybe that's, we'll look at it also.
Yeah. And I, that's a great point. I don't think that there's, like I said, I fight, I have no problem fighting for parking amongst patients, that's why I live here.
Yep.
But when I got to fight, you know, until you change around the parking in what's known as a church lot, it's amazing how much more parking there is in that one controlled setting. You changed eight parking spaces and cleaned up the entire lot. All the employees now are in those back two rows. Where do they belong? They actually belong one block over, but we'll get to that. But it's worked, the enforcement is there. And you take that as an example of it, the village doesn't have near the parking problem that people present to it. And I fight, and I, I should be just the opposite of that, I'm sorry. It's not a problem. It's the employers that we refuse to make, when they have 75 or 15 in some of the smaller places, 15 employers is 15 cars. I'm sorry, nobody's commuting into this, none of these bartenders, bar backs, security are commuting by training or by cab or walking in here. And what you guys did in the church lot, with a handful of signs and a can of paint, straightened out that lot considerably. And I don't see why that can't be done in the rest of these lots. You know, I'm village resident as well, should we have, we have six spots, and those things are now being a lot better patrolled, an E sticker, employer employee, employer employee, little decal, the window, now get you a ticket as opposed to a free ride in those nine spots. That's changed through this board, you know, getting on people. It's not difficult. You know what, I've paid many parking tickets, I have one more coming up. But I haven't gotten a ticket in church lot since you guys straightened that out. And I think that it's, the problems are very fixable. If these businesses need to expand and increase their patron size, you know what, fine. Do, we got to get them on the outskirts, get these employees in the outskirts of parking.
I might have a pretty few.
I don't know, I, I'll have trouble with that. But I, like I said, I don't know which way, if the moratorium's going to help or hurt, but I...
No, I really appreciate the comments, because I think, and I know that, Mark, I know at your place, you push your people back.
We have 20 employees.
And you push them.
Get 20 in the store. You know what I'm saying, that's a lot.
But we don't, I don't park, not to make sure, they don't park near the store, but there are others, people that park there all day long, and the problem is, there's nobody there to say to them, hey, you own the store, move your car out there, like the jewelry store lady, like the people behind, next to the bank, who park their cars right there, I don't want them to walk a few feet. I don't park there, I park way out, I park along the road, I park out in the road. And if they come in early, I told, they tell them to come in, I tell them, they park, put my spot, come in early, look for a spot.
I ask everybody to take a tour through the parking lots.
We have the worst parking lot.
Between 8:30 and 9 o'clock, Church Street, Cary Street, and there's a lot of cars in those spots.
But the only problem is...
They're not...
I'd say 8:30 in the morning, or 2:00.
8:30 in the morning. You mentioned the evening, but I'm looking at it in the daytime, too.
In the daytime, absolutely.
And if you, if you drive in those parking lots in the morning, before the stores are open, you'll see, like you said, a third of the spaces are already filled with people, and they're not shoppers, they're employees.
Absolutely, no.
Now, good thing David Kennedy is here, is the executive director of the chamber, because in the past, you've asked the chamber to educate the store owners about that, that these are not where the stores should be.
They don't care.
Or you should be parking, and not be parking in those, but it's fallen on deaf ears.
Yep.
And unfortunately, and I know Gail tried it a few years ago, worked on that, I think she sent a letter to everybody, and they're just, they just don't do it. And it's, you know, we could go out there every morning and probably give out 50 to 100 tickets to everybody.
Yeah.
But don't move the cars pretty quick.
One of the problems is, there's nobody there to do that. What's her name, Deidra, I know nobody, nobody knows, I don't like Deidra, because she doesn't win, and I told her, I don't like you. So, because she doesn't do anything, she just sits there.
That's when you really feel worried.
Another thing is, those security guys, they go around the cars looking for inspections, and they give tickets, instead of saying, hey, this is giving you the first time, because we, because we want you to come back to Patchogue, you forgot to do inspections, instead of giving them a ticket, hey, I know you're in Patchogue doing the theater or...
I don't believe we can do that, that's selective enforcement.
Instead of giving tickets.
No, we have to give you the rest of them.
You know, you make money, you can't pass on.
We say the inspection...
Yeah, we can't do selective enforcement.
Because that's what you're saying.
But, I'm just going to, the parking meters will solve that problem very quickly, because unless those people want to feed the meters all day, because it expects a proposition that we don't expect to, that people will do that.
They used to do it years ago, when we were in the front, they used to go out there, put the money in the meter.
That's, they want to do that.
Are the village residents still going to have available parking, given the meter slots?
Well, we're working on a plan right now. In fact, we're going to set a public hearing tonight to go to discuss rates and conditions of parking. So, that'll come up later.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
That is a good point, good point, Paul. Any other comments?
Josephine Miller, 276, that's getting me. I'm not so sure that parking is the only reason to enact this moratorium. Maybe this is a good time for the village to take a look at how we're expanding, is this the way we want to go? You know, what flavor do we want the village to have? So, I don't think parking should be the only issue. And the second thing is, since you're going down memory lane with those buildings, I used to work on Oak Street, how many years ago, when AHRC was there and Grants was across the street, and every lunch hour I would go in and buy myself a chocolate bar.
Here we go. I think that the counter is probably where the children's section is now, right?
Right. My footprints are imprinted.
John Bojek, 10th Street. Public House, are they exempt from the moratorium?
No businesses exempt from the moratorium.
So, they have a, they have a portal for that deck with 185 customers, is that out of this?
I think that was denied.
That was denied.
Oh, that was denied.
At the last time.
Oh, it was, all right, I'm a little bit behind. All right. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I don't disagree with Dennis's pragmatic suggestions for doing various things, but reality is, those, this is a good thing, because we have businesses that are doing good things. There's the deck at the Tap Room, so they got that, right? Village has expanded. Eventually, the people at the, at the Public House will probably get their way when they adjust the things, but we'll see. But these businesses are doing that, and so they can just be adding on and at the same time, bringing in more customers, but also creating attractive demands, without a doubt. The Tri-Tech buildings are coming, we have guesses about what that's going to represent in terms of parking demands, we won't really know until it arrives. You have a facility coming, that's coming. I'm not, I think there's a little magical thinking going on about what kind of parking demands are going to be arising out of that facility, too. They, all these things combined, leads the village to need more parking, and that's a simple fact. So, things like the parking meters make sense as a plan, raising more revenue, buying land, waiting in time to do that, and coming up with the, but basically, a master plan, Mayor, that's basically, as I'm listening to this, a resting, it's not just a moratorium, it's a plan.
It's a plan.
To deal with what people have been crying about now for several years, and are afraid of, too, that increase the parking demands without the parking there of understanding businesses in the village.
And those scare people, what?
Absolutely. So, I think it's a good moratorium to put in place, and I'm looking forward to the plan.
Any other comments? Motion to accept a present?
Motion.
Second. Second. David, congratulations, Billy, you know, board. Well, thank you. Usually I have to miss a meeting if I get put on the list. If we actually have any defendants, then you'd be on board.
So, these guys will chair a committee and have...
Will have some representation of the businesses, they bid, planning, you know, all kind of broad.
Mr. Mayor, liaison to the chamber, request that I be on that.
Can't have a number four though. Can we just switch on? No.
I look forward to serving the commission.
Can we just have a Fourth of July parade? I guess the next parade is a pep parade? Wendy? Do we have bands? Do we have bands at the parade? No. Wendy Lenzalata, give us some background, what can we do?
Oh, sure, we're on the Coalition Against Massive Violence, we might have a short pep parade in September, September 21st, Saturday. We've since, the last time we were here, we joined the Chamber of Commerce, and I've been working with David to try to figure out the exact logistics of it. It looks like Ford and our executive director is comfortable with our original plan starting at the Congregational Church, going to West Avenue. And then I think she just wants, right on the same, you know, street, just turn around and then right back at the church. This way, any tables or anything will be set up to one area.
So, in what ways?
Yeah.
I love that, bring, come and go.
Do we have any concern?
Is this going to...
It's in the last meeting.
Yeah, we discussed it some other weeks, this is in the last meeting.
Do you have some question? Because, Wendy, one of the things you got to do is end up working with Billy, trustee Hilton, with recreation, because they normally do the coordination of parades. So, of course, he wasn't here last week, last meeting, so if you can give a little more background on it.
Was it approved?
Dates.
The date is approved, but waiting for the details.
The other option that was presented to us is to start at the church, go to West Avenue, attend it there, where there's a parking lot behind the courthouse, and David checked with the county, and they said that we could use that if we wanted to. So, that's another option, to just have it straight.
Can I ask why you wouldn't start there?
That's what I was just going to say.
Go to the church and end up, maybe in that...
Start at the county lot, yeah, and end up at the church.
I guess, Reverend Walter, you've been involved in this, and your sense about... What's going on, so this doesn't work, I can learn from it.
Reverend Wendy Walton, Congregational Church of Patchogue. Yes, there have, we have been working with the Chamber of Commerce, and as Wendy just said, and I've been talking to, Wendy's on vacation this week, so she's pretending that she's on vacation this week, and the executive director, Joanne Sanders, and I've run by a few different options. One is, just since we have a relation... One is, just since we have a relationship with the Coalition, and that we're there, and if, you know, all of a sudden, somebody's, say, an elderly person is walking a dog or something, and like, the church is open, go in, use the bathroom, sit down, have a drink, open the refrigerator, whatever. So, just that kind of comfort, as well as the thought was, if they were to park again, this is in the morning, so you'll have these two-thirds of the parking lot available to us apparently, from ten AM to noon. Yeah? So far, Mr. Republican? So, from ten AM to noon. So, at that hour of the day, if people wanted to leave some stuff in the church where they thought it could be safe, and not be schlepping it around or whatever, that they could do that, so they have their car there, they have some of their belongings there, they unhitch their elephant, or whatever, probably their dog or whatever that they're gonna be walking, and also with the length of the route, you thought that going down to west and moving back to the church would be convenient. That's the feeling of the executive director of the Coalition, actually, and we talked to, today, I was on the phone with Mr. Kennedy about this.
I guess I just, you know, it was a little run.
No, we already did the X one.
Yeah. Twenty.
If any road closures and everything else?
Yeah, I just wanna, I mean, actually, I had talked to the village the other day, and we were, you know, I was not really prepared to give the final plan yet, certainly this was gonna be part of my report, and I didn't see on the agenda until just now that Wendy was even still on the agenda. I wasn't, so she was kinda caught off our guard, too. We haven't really had a formal committee meeting yet. Certainly, one of the things I was gonna request is have someone from the village join us on that committee. I assume it would be coming through Parks and Recreation. You know, a lot of this has just been, some ideas we've bandied about. You know, it should be a quick parade, you know, with the pets, and I think afterwards they'd like to do some kind of educational slash award ceremony slash some small vendors at the end of the parade. So, the whole event would go from like ten to two, or ten to twelve for the parade, and then twelve to two for like the activities that would be off the street.
For eight to two hours.
Well, I mean, it probably wouldn't take that long. I mean, at least at the time, there was a lot of, I mean, obviously, setting up, getting people to show up, and then having trades down, all depends on how many people participate.
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
How many people, what's the parade going to be, if it's up?
It would just be people walking down the street with their dogs. Hopefully, they'll be dressing them up, because they'll be practicing them up.
How would it be?
You know, this is the first time that any of us have ever been involved in a pet parade before, so your guess is as good as mine. Certainly, it's gotta be open to everybody. The idea, there'll be a ten-dollar registration fee, you know, that's how the Coalition is raising.
Wouldn't it be better to have an event at a location rather than close Main Street down for two hours on a Saturday morning?
My understanding, Seville does this, it's an annual event, and it's quite successful. And also, I anticipated, actually, that there would be some business time to this, some business benefit to it as well. So, yes, we could have it in a gymnasium. But I just thought that, you know, and like I mentioned, last time we were talking here, and trustee Hilton was at that time not here, I think one of the things we really wanna do is to take domestic violence out of the closet.
To where?
Yes, and, because there's, there's a lot of, there's a strong relation, as Wendy said at the last meeting, between domestic violence and pet abuse. But to get people to talk about domestic violence is very difficult, because it's gross. And so, to get people to dress up their dogs and say, "Why are we doing this? This is benefiting the Coalition Against Domestic."
I have no question or issue with the purpose, none whatsoever. But I seriously question closing Main Street for two hours on a Saturday morning for any cause that's gonna have a hundred people walking. I mean, we just had, we had a parade that went on for an hour on the floor, right? I mean, we have some, some big parades, and if we say yes to this, okay, how do we say no to anyone?
Well, one of the ways to say yes and no is that it costs the residents about twenty-five hundred dollars to close Main Street. The fire department requests that we keep North and South Ocean up open. It's, logistically, it's tight. And so, you know, these are what we, things that we have to take into consideration. I think that, you know, there's always been discussion in the past that we should just close Main Street every second, you know, the open shop, even all that. But we just can't do that with the higher cost of code enforcement. I'm not saying that it's not, you know, that it's suddenly doable. It's expensive, and it's complicated, as much as it doesn't seem to appear to be, it is. So, these are things that I have to take into consideration for anyone, you know, domestic violence is something that everybody should address. Dogs, you know, fire trucks, they're all the same, as far as I'm concerned. There's a money issue, logistically, the fire department, it's extremely difficult. So, if we're on the fence as far as how to do it and how not to do it, this would be something that we should all take into consideration. Like, it's one of the, one of the punchbowl, so. One thing that was taken into consideration is the time of it, because originally, the time was not ten AM to noon. Right. And at the suggestion of some persons in the hallway, actually, some persons that are seated here today, we changed the time to something that would be, and we expressed from the very beginning, and which is one reason why we reached out and were reached out to by the Chamber of Commerce, was that we would do something that we really believe would benefit. It's hard, I mean, if we were making a lot of money for the, if we were making a lot of money for the bars and the restaurants up and down the Main Street, I think it would probably be a very different consideration. I think you're right, this is not a money-making deal for anybody. I didn't say that. I had to, excuse me. Well, excuse me, if you would like, that the village is interested in making money off of this. I just explained to you how much it costs the village.
I mean, I just, you know, at the last meeting, I think the bottom line is, we need the group, get together as a committee, and talk about the logistics. Just to go back from least the perspective with the history that I saw at the last meeting, Wendy had come to make the presentation, and there seemed to be a general consensus that the idea was a good idea, with the mayor made an excellent suggestion, and I appreciated that, to work with the Chamber to work this out.
Right.
You know, at the time, I think the three of us were left with the impression that they liked the idea of the parade, but they're gonna leave the details up to us to come together. Tonight, there's some excellent points about what parade entails, and that's something we need to take into consideration. So, before we get into, you know, because we're so early in the stages, nothing's been put together yet. You know, the best thing I think to do, and now the village is gonna be included on the committee, for us to sit down, kind of work out the details, and be better prepared for the next meeting, to have a formal plan put together.
Right.
So, I mean, they did what was asked of them, they came, and I thanked them, because now we got a brand-new member of the Chamber of Commerce, and we're always very excited about that. It's particularly an organization such as that, with such prestige, and dealing with such an important issue. So, I think we just need time now to just work out the details. Certainly, the pet parade, that was what they were focusing on. Maybe there's something we can compromise in the middle and work it out. And, you know, probably the next week, whether it's yourself or someone from Recreation, we'll kind of talk about the nitty-gritty about that, and try to avoid, you know, before we can get there, or close any of them, honestly.
When is the harvest?
That's.
October twenty-sixth.
It was also from ten AM to a maximum of noon, I believe, that's what was approved, with the understanding that if it takes less time than that, then maybe it wouldn't be a full two hours.
Right.
And another advantage of that route would be, if it was, if it were to begin and finalize at the church, we could bring it inside onto church property, we have a gymnasium in there, and say, "We gotta get off the street, come on in and have some lemonade or something." Really, to try to minimize the... So, it would be, it would be good for the Coalition, good for the village, and that's why we're trying to, as Mr. Kennedy said, trying to include everybody as much as we can, including on the time, because if it doesn't, I'm not gonna walk around with somebody else's dog for an extra hour just because we have the hour.
That's what it seems to me, to go from the church, west to avenue, and back is not gonna take two hours. It happens. So, I think it'd probably take a long while.
Yes, and if it, my understanding, again, I don't know what your understanding of this was, was that we were looking at ten to twelve, just so we'd have the parameters, and if it came up that we needed less time than that, then we would need less time than that. I think the Chamber, as well as whoever your representative would be, would point that out to us, because we don't need to keep wandering around needlessly for an hour after everybody else has gone home, unless we prefer to do that on a Saturday morning.
I mean, certainly, something like, maybe it's small enough that you don't even have to close the street as much as maybe just stop traffic for like a twenty-minute period, and have it like walk along with it, like they do with some of the road races that start sometimes. Again, it's just an option, but again, we're just so early in the stages of it, you know, it's more about, you know, honoring the, this is an interesting request. My mother-in-law was so excited, she'd been talking about having a pet parade in this community for years, so when I told her about the pet parade, I said, "I have a committee for you to join," so.
We did.
I think years ago, they was, they was.
Go for it. Oh, yes, I won the pet parade one week.
You won it?
I won it, yeah, I won five. But I think I had a good luck.
What about going up to the Four Corners, back to Maple Avenue, or down to Burlington, and back that way? You don't have to go across Ocean. You don't have to cross Ocean.
Does it need to be, can it be a sidewalk with it?
No.
I wouldn't think so.
None approved.
You know, one thing that we don't know is how much response there will be. There's some initial excitement about it, that people are gonna get, you know, there's gonna be, just think of it, a best costume award. So, there's gonna be some people who really would like to get their pets out there, wander around. But I can't anticipate, really. But maybe we could find out ways to get the feelers out of what kind of a response would be. Already, Linda's pulling me aside, saying that she lives in Seville, and she knows how they handle it over there, and so, correct me if I'm wrong, really what we're trying to do is, is to get the opportunity route, and to get the dates set in, which I believe we already have, and then, to the best of our ability, work with the village so that everybody is pleased with it, and that it's doable, and that the parameters of it are good according to finances and time, logistics, all that stuff.
Bill, is there anything going on at Shorefront Park, at the event show?
I have forgotten my book.
At least according to the calendar I looked at, there wasn't anything.
Would you consider possibly going east and going down Main Avenue and having your event down at the park?
Yeah, again, Joanne Sanders is the executive director, and has been for thirty years or so, so with her, and she has some serious health problems, so she's not here. So, I wouldn't really wanna speak. She's the fourth voice in here, and it was the Coalition that came to me and asked me to, I'm an honorary board member, disclosure there, and proud to be one, but that would be something I'd really wanna talk to Joanne about as far as whether they would be willing to have it somewhere else.
I think that, if I may, I think we would, that would be something that we would be open to.
I don't know what the cost differential would be, or whether or not we would need to close the road, or just have a rolling barricade going down.
My expectation was.
Suggesting.
Yeah. So, who's the contact, who you call, Reverend? Well, Wendy is, but there's, you wanna speak, there's an executive director of the Coalition, and I don't know if Wendy has authority to be.
Though I have.
Who should I call?
Though I have a point.
Okay. Why don't we do this, probably together?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, Wendy and David and I, I guess, are the...
And with the village, and we'll make sure the executive director is included in the meeting as well, and I would think next week would be a great time for us to sit down and rely on this all out.
Joanne would probably refer back to Wendy anyway, right?
Yeah, I think we would be open to a park if there was a park available.
Your collaboration with trustee Hilton, I'm sure, would be a great assistance to you. You know, we just had the, we put up the pirate ship.
Yes.
And down at Shorefront Park, there were swarms of people, a meal, everybody was there, and, you know, it was very festive. It was a great, a great event. And honestly, I think since you're, you're really formative, I mean, you may have done it in Seville, I guess, but.
Well, I haven't, I've never seen a parade.
But Shorefront Park, if it were available, I think it would be a very good venue for something like this. Because, you know, when you get two thousand people coming down, okay, and you have an out, you have floats and all that stuff, you can have Main Street. Okay, from my perspective, okay? But I think you're early on, a little bit experimental, and, you know, closing Main Street, I mean, aside from the money, it's a big deal. It's a big deal.
Where do they have the Seville parade?
They have it at Main Street, but it's, I'm telling you, it's from the Catholic Church, well, Oregon Law, which I think it's gonna be in the street, because they're doing some destruction. And they marched down to Kansas Avenue, over to Gillette. The Kansas Avenue building. It takes about seven minutes, because it starts at nine o'clock in the morning, and they just walk like maybe a happy mind. So, and we get about three hundred people, so that's why I'm saying, but it ends at a park, and then the festivities continue. They have trophies for best pet, et cetera, and it's always well-attended.
Well.
So, that's why I'm saying it's a good, I didn't wanna get involved, it's not my place, but.
What about if we were to just continue the conversation in a place where it didn't take up all this time?
That's a good idea.
Here, because I think there are more appropriate areas, you know, to meal over at someplace and have sandwiches out, rather than here.
Wendy, if I can just ask, when you're ready to come back, if you would let me know?
Sure.
We have our next meeting on the twenty-second.
Sure.
We don't meet again till the end of August.
Okay.
So, if you're ready next meeting, I'll put you on it.
Okay. And Shorefront Park, that's new at the park?
Yeah, down the foot of Ryder Avenue, or down by the water.
Right on the water.
It's big, it's beautiful, it's got grass.
It's, we're doing a ceremony at the bar on the bay. It's very close.
Right. Oh, that's.
It's got a band shop, it's got a place for everybody to vote in, microphones.
Definitely a home venue.
It talks after the orations. Well, the parade, it's, they better be.
Classic pigs.
What's that?
Love pigs.
We began the conversation last time, we were talking about classic pigs.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, where are they gonna get?
Yeah. You're a film. Excuse me. You're a new place to be.
Why is there a minute?
Okay, are we doing anything to revocation? Joe's a million taxi license?
Mr. William paid me last Monday, and voluntarily, he can't business his taxi license. Now, we'll have a hearing, and he has been brought up as a parish captain.
I'm just wondering whether we can do it anyway, to make sure that he doesn't come back.
No, it's not necessary, because we would schedule again, we'd apply again, we'd have to go through the whole process again, but as of this point, he can't operate that vehicle, and goes a tax license, and goes to Patchell. Did you notify the taxi company?
I did not.
Well, probably you could work him off and say, for the record, that his tax license was, is ready.
Take care of it.
Dennis, we're just in here, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, sorry. Oh, good evening, thank you very much. Obviously, the pet parade was part of it, though it takes a lot of. Obviously, next big thing is the Live Act to Five, and sidewalk sales, our biggest weekend of the year for the Chamber of Commerce is fast approaching. Matter of fact, the committee's meeting tonight, just to finalize the last details. We're gonna have six stages of live music. We have well over a hundred vendors. Tomorrow's a meeting with the fifth precinct and the restaurants, and make sure everybody's on the same page about the rules, the regulations, and the safety. So, I'm really looking forward to that. I think Thursday, the move to Thursday night, though there's been a few who've questioned it, I think it's gonna show to be a big plus and a step in the right direction about keeping this festival going since Friday night. Obviously, it's become so popular, Patchell, holding this event on a Friday night would be more of a negative than a positive, and we don't want that. And then, following the Live Act to Five on Thursday, is our Family Fun Night on Friday night. A lot of great activities are planned as well. We're gonna have dancing, of course, our sidewalk sales will be going on, the streets will be closed, and that certainly will be geared more strictly for families and their children to enjoy. I also, you know, I wanna thank the village for giving the. Um I also, you know, I wanna thank the village for giving the Chamber of Voice on the Parking Leader Committee. Uh I think the first meeting was excellent, uh I feel like it's a lot of good points, and I commend Jack for taking the the lead on this, and you know, I have been gathering some comments that we'll bring up at the meeting from our members. You know, in particular, and that was a general discussion earlier, is about, you know, some businesses are concerned about their employees and, you know, how they'll be able to park without being charged a fee every night when they do park. Uh obviously, the best will be telling them it's far away, but you know, that always works sometimes. Um and then beyond that, oh, July twenty seventh is the our next grand opening, very good, as everybody knows, has uh has opened, but their official grand opening will be July twenty seventh, twelve noon. Uh if it's as hot as it's been, I'm sure that's a great incentive to join us at that at that as well. All right, and that's everything I got on report, unless I have anything for the chamber, right? Everybody have a break.
Thank you, guys, all right. Just a few things, I just wanted to uh promote a little bit of the gateway coming into the Patch of Theater. As most people know, summertime at the Patch of Theater is gateway time, and you certainly know Mark.
Yeah.
Uh we'll have it all planned out with the code for the mandates. Uh they start with Singing in the Rain on July twenty fourth to August tenth. Uh they have Children's uh Gateway Playhouse presents Susical Junior. And uh Susical Junior. And Ballroom with a Twist on August thirteenth to the eighteenth. So uh Gateway has a good lineup this this summer. Also, for children, we have Annie the Musical coming on August sixteen, seventeen to eighteen. And Live Special Live in the Lobby starting September with Townsend in the lobby, and a very special Live in the Lobby coming in October. Jen Chapin is going to be featured in Live in the Lobby, so she appeared. Yeah, yeah, a lot of good shows coming up at the theater, something for everybody. We've got um Harold Guthrie on November sixteenth, Martin Sexton on November ninth, and Atlantic Wind Symphony. Couple, we've got Ewan Miller to come back, and a few other things in the works that we're planning for the theater. Go on www.patchoftheater.com and see what's happening.
Yes, would that so well at the parade? Jack was the band.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
You know, depending on the parade, we have a Petro Community Band, is it called?
It's called the Atlantic Community Band.
The Atlantic Community Band, yes. They um they play, whenever the bands are on Main Street during the parade, it really is, I think they play a half hour before they do a small concert before the parade. They play, and it really is, they're very good.
And it's packed with a lot of local people, and it's really, really good, it's like good edition. And I think, Mayor, that was your idea, wasn't it?
I think so.
If you do that, yes, thank you. Likely with regrets except, here, sorry, a letter of resignation, Public Safety Officer Keita Bates. She submitted her resignation from department on July fifth. Officer Bates is resigning due to being deployed to Afghanistan later this month, and with regrets, I've worked with Officer Bates for, you know, for a period of time, a very good officer, very responsive, a real community minded person, and obviously, not only cared about her community, but about her country and her world, and she's gonna be in Afghanistan. So we should wish her luck and save time serving our country. Is motion with regret, with regrets, accepting requests.
Regrets and questions.
Resignation of Public Safety Officer Keita Bates.
Thank you.
Hold it.
All right.
As we mentioned earlier, the parking leaders are coming, and we had our first parking committee meeting last Wednesday. And I'd like to just mention while David's gone, David was in the in the on the committee, he was here, Lauren Belmonte, who's here tonight, she was at the meeting, is part of the committee. Jim Graham, back there, another village president, is part of the committee, and Trustee Keys joined us for that meeting. And we worked on a lot of different ideas in the last two hours, and we came up with some some plans for fees and conditions, and a lot of a lot of different things to do that, but I like to set public hearing to to effect and to let the public speak about it. And what do we do then?
July twenty second.
July twenty second. What is motion, second?
Second.
All right.
And the next parking meeting, committee meeting, is on July seventeenth here at Village Hall, and we will be discussing the education program that we are gonna put in place once the parking meters come into, come live online. The projected date is September third, so by that time, we should be uh put together, having everything together for our 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 education program, and we plan to have a a community meeting at the Patch of Theater sometime before the parking meters become live for all the chamber members, anybody else who wants to come, any residents, just to get an idea.
How do we quieten, excuse, how do we quieten about that meeting?
Uh it will be, we'll talk about it in public hearing.
Thank you.
And we'll ask our local newspapers and news agencies to promote that. That'll be closer to the lot, you know, they go on lives September third, so it'll be closer to that point in time. But I recommend that people come to that meeting to give a good idea of what we're. Mostly.
Sorry, I think the seventeenth is a problem, it's uh meeting tonight, and it's also, I don't think, so this will be. Then court uses that, so.
All right, so we'll, yeah, we'll use.
Okay, okay.
We'll be in the mayor's conference room, Jim.
You need three eight, that's one.
Ah, we'll see. But again, because they were part of my department. I would just like to say that the members of the committee have given a lot of great input, and we moved very quickly, a lot of things done at the last one, we expect the same thing to go on next time. And I appreciate everybody's work on that. That's it, Mayor.
He didn't say if you're just commencing to go on my line to a quartet.
Oh, I just breeze through, as I said, that's why we have the website, it's on the website.
Listen, if I remember the mayor's.
Trustee Keys.
Mr. Mayor, fellow board members, ladies and gentlemen, very brief tonight, actually, um we have a theme this afternoon down mascot, start talking about Sandy and climbing. Um I have a new rep actually that they sent down there, and so we got quite a bit covered, um meeting again on Thursday, I'll keep everybody posted. We have some good news, finally, um we have been trying for years, about three years at least, to get a reclassification of Oak Street. There's such a thing as a collector's road and a various various road, and we had applied for some funding for our collector's road, and so obviously would include Oak Street, because that's a pretty busy street, which we would assume would have been a collector's street, however, that stayed in the offer differently, and so finally, after about two after three years, phone calls and emails, and pride, and the meeting, and I mean, I would start a phone call with one guy, look at five different people, and end up back to the same guy, and this went on for the last couple of years, so finally we got some help. Um we got the official, we got a verbal approval, probably over a year ago, finally got the official written approval, and so we're gonna hopefully start moving on not getting that road paved as well.
So you know how long it's been, this was monies that were appropriated and put aside for us by Congressman Bishop in two thousand and six. So we've been wrestling with the state to release these funds since two thousand and six, I guess. Would Trustee King, who we met with the state, I find this figured, instead of getting released, but Joe took it, but you have the hold of it, you got it.
And so hopefully now it sees. Um I'm requesting approval tonight to hire Kevin Giacchaloni and Vito Plomo, do two ones, and Vito Plomo with seasonal labors, DPW with ten seventy-five per hour. Motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Requesting approval to hire Jay Holcimark to provide nine services for the installation of four emergency power generators within the village, at a cost not to exceed twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, I think you have some information in your packet.
Which district, uh which?
Uh support the DPW facility at Waverly at New Village Hall, three eighty bay and three ninety.
The three eighty bay one is gonna take care of both.
Will take care of both, the generator will take care of both.
It's it's three generators, four buildings.
Three generators, four buildings, that's correct, and Holcimark will do the engineering design of the package.
Yeah, I actually, we put in some freedom funding on this, whether we get it or not, we'll be, you know, we were out of power at the highway department, they ended up truly reading.
Oh, that was amazing, it was like watching the Apollo thirteen, these guys just put some things together, how we made it through the night.
Yeah, they used to have a welding machine, did it?
Yeah, yeah, how we made it through the night was really kind of fantastic.
They read up the boat, you know, so.
But yeah, we don't wanna try that again this year.
Second.
And that's all I have for today, thank you.
Trustee Keys.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to take behalf of the great Patch of the Chamber of Commerce as the forceful. Pull out many banners on Main Street. To promote the St. Louis Festival, which is on September twenty eighth, so they're looking to hang banners to promote the event uh for two weeks prior to September twenty eighth. So that's a wonderful.
Mr. Mayor, I could, Trustee Keys, I just want to let you know how many positive phone calls came in over the paving, the paint, and wood and brand.
Yes, actually, I got a letter from a resident.
A lot of positive calls, home pages, it's nice to see them. Yes, they were very appreciative.
Now waiting for the speeding plates.
Yes.
The new radar.
Yeah.
The longer it started, the better.
Can you carry it? Yeah, Trustee Keys.
Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees, uh first a question, do we know when the library's open?
July seventeenth.
July seventeenth, three thirty, three thirty.
All right. It was changed.
So July seventeenth, three thirty.
It's near my calendar.
Yeah. Some concern in the community about the the wood construction of a new village. A couple of people spoke to me, I heard from Pete Sarich about it, and everybody should be confident that it's being built in code, it's fully sprinkled, there are firewalls. It's the fire department and the building inspectors watching everything happen, so it's not a tin box, it's a safely constructed building. I don't know if that'll all lay anyone's concerns, but.
I believe it's international, this is building code, not the two thousand and one, so it's a double purchase, it's a decision to the government.
Well, I think what they're doing is as good as it gets, from what I've heard.
That's all.
That's all. Trustee Keys.
Good evening, everybody, I just have one item that's not on the agenda, I'm seeking board approval to appoint Michael Neriata as an alternate to the planning board. Uh Michael's an interment, he's wife's husband, so you're out of you, I got him recently, I think he'd be very good.
Second.
It's fine, it's not, oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh request approval for planning board members salivating all these to attend nine house plant and zoning school in Belleville on July twenty fourth, at a cost of eighty hours.
Trustee, nice to see you again. Oh, thank you very much. The uh last week, the pool opened.
Wonderful.
And this year, I I I have to check the numbers, but I believe we probably have more membership than we ever have. Uh last week, we started swimming lessons and sailing lessons, and today was the start of dance. The world is fantastic, the staff is great, and we have to thank uh Luann, Largano, and Maria, just to see it, all their hard work in getting all the signups and licenses and approvals and the and law, and of course, uh so that's been really successful.
Now I'm down here almost every day, but I find it just amazing, you know, the number of people, it looks great, people have a good time.
Yeah, and the, you know, all the numbers been up on the pool, all the levels are calm and steady despite the sun, which just heat and cold, you know. Last year rained a lot, so, you know, the name is out.
The sun takes a lot to plan this.
It looks so nice.
Are those the ones who feel like they stopped trying to go, we have to go, so what you're talking about putting in the park?
Yeah, a single pole, a single pole.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we're talking about putting shade structures at the new pirate ship playground. Uh there'd be cantilevers like the ones at the pool, but they would be single pole coming out over a bench, and they're inexpensive enough to splash them around the park, not just add one in a solid place, and they're fairly inexpensive, and we have some funding for them as well.
Do you splash them around the?
Splash them around.
Well, you know, I want to put the.
I know what you're talking about.
Talking about putting a, an impact left to left, if it's, we have a track for it, is possibly put a putting green between the two parks themselves, you know, you. Boy just says, take the kids to the park, dad's, ah, we're going to park, that, take the kids to the park, take us, bring four golf balls, he can use himself or the kids abuse themselves. One of the issues we're dealing with, the complaints we're getting is the heat down there, so we put the shades up, you can putt for a while, you can nap for a while, you can have a high afternoon.
It's on Harris.
That'd be correct. The kids are all over the place. Uh but we get one that, yeah, so.
We had a, we had a, we had a brand.
Yeah, we had somebody, um it's called Southwest, Putting Greens, and they were having some prices on it, but it's, I think it's like nine holes would be able to put on a heavy importance. But the big thing is is trying to make it, and Maria has some workout equipment issues to be putting there, and also in the park, so there'll be the workout equipment, there'll be the putting green thoughts. And then then you have something for the kids aged four, the age twelve, so really kind of making it a family friendly kind of place to be, and something that's just a little bit better than just going out with your kids sitting in the sun, and the other thing is, is trying to work with cable vision, you can't wifi down there also, you know, so that you have wifi in the corner in the pool. In the pool, there's that whole area being being wired up.
Right. Um the, I'm sure you all saw saw this summer, the tent, or the spring, the plant tent that was behind the garden village.
Yes.
Uh graciously has donated all of his unsold plants to the parks department, of which we've been planting around the pool and around the bench show, and there's still some more to go in.
Who was that though?
All right.
There's a fireman from Bell Ford, like spark something, it was nice.
Right, next meeting, I'll give a shout out, I have that card, my card.
Really, really, but a bunch of stuff they're doing, it's easy.
Yeah, and he said that he uh he had a fairly successful year, he bought a little, it's franchise, maybe, he bought a little too much, um that's why he had some leftover. He hopes that that spot's available again for him next year, but other than that, he said he did very well.
It's right to the left, too, I thought it was.
Yeah. Um that's that. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request approval to increase the salary of lifeguard Megan Hollow from nine dollars per hour to ten dollars retroactive to June twenty fourth. Apparently, she's been with us for five years and was, had earned this raise.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Both of you are.
Uh good evening, once again, Mr. Secretary, good, thank you. Uh we're always talking for, when you talk about the code and with.
With all respect, would you talk about the code and with that wood build, wood structure? Yes, I'm sure it's a hundred percent to the code, there's no doubt in my mind, it is not. But that, that building would never go up in the city, the way it's, the, the, the distant plant, that much wood, space and stuff.
We have state fire code, one of the things that they're doing to the also is the fire protection is commercial, really?
Yes, actually, that wood is all treated, yeah.
Between every floor, it's sprinkled, between the floors, it's sprinkled.
Both ways.
Both ways, both ways, it's a comfort.
That much wooden distance wouldn't, would never, but I mean, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, but that, because that's all three developments, built the same way. And the problem that the village is gonna incorporate, is going to occur, excuse me, in that, in the development the way it is, is those peaked roofs, the snow and ice that will hit the sidewalks will, if we had winter like we recently had, we will beyond injure people with those peaked roofs that are over the opening of the driveway that's coming in, and then the one on Main Street there, those, those will become an issue. And that's another part of the code that won't fly in the city. But I'm not saying it's a problem, but I'm just saying there is that issue, that is the big difference between one and the other.
What would they have done in the city about that?
Flutter, flutter back, you got to control, you must control your own water. You have no, you cannot, nothing to, to, probably to the, to the street.
Let's, let's talk to them about how they can control that, because the same thing is supposed to control all of the water, I guess, like.
Yeah, this, I mean, you can see what's there, and they have a cantilevered out to grab it. And like I said, with another winter like we had, I, I can see a fatality at the very, you know, very quick.
Wow, we've never thought of that. The snow especially, I think.
Yeah, that's a lot of snow, and if it breaks free, that, that sheet.
Right.
Where's it gonna, you know, look, look where that pitch ends up. And the artist's rendition, this, uh, for the board, the artist's rendition didn't show that. It showed it back, it showed a cantilever in the beginning, it showed how they were gonna control it. But that's an artist's rendition, you know, now we have a new building going up with the senior citizen home. That building, the way that thing is, with steel, everything's steel between floors and rock. It's a different construction, and the fire containment is, you know, you can, you have to have seven, seven simultaneous fires to have, actually have a problem there. Be, over here, one kitchen goes up, it could, it can't, doesn't say that will, but it's totally, that, that, that construction they're doing with Senior Center is far away, well, beyond, they, whatever, whoever architect they've hired is much better suited for what they're doing. But they've also, you know, they have, their patients aren't going to be able to run for their lives. They have to have a little better system there. But, you know what I'm saying, they're like, what they're doing there, I, I don't, I deal with that wood, there's not, wood's not going up in flames with the strike of a match, it's treated, it's, that's why they use particle board over plywood, because it's easier to treat the particles than to put them together so they don't burn. It will eventually, everything eventually burns, but those won't burn any time soon. Sorry, one more, go. Oh, that's, I got it, okay, thank you very much for your time, word.
You know, I have a question, three lessons to, to a quick change we made in the Church Street parking lot, which.
Yes.
What was that, I'm sorry?
The angle spots, do you mind them? I'm sorry, the angle spots are all either pickup and loading, and there's a handful of them that are two hours, the three on the end, and an additional handicap spot. But all those angle spots, that's where, those were the first four people to work, and then the, the first row was all of the people that showed up five minutes late to work.
Right.
And now that that first row is two hour, they've, if you go there at eight-thirty in the morning or in the evening, you'll see the vast majority of the people are, the, the back rows, it's actually opened up. Because, but they came through enforcement, the signs and the paint, the can of paint were fifty percent of it, other fifty percent was, everybody got tickets in that two hours. Yes, at nine o'clock at night, they stopped writing two hour tickets, obviously. But during the day, there was tickets issue, one of my neighbors was issued one. But he, his, he's there in the morning late because of work schedule.
Right.
He works a different shift, so he has to park differently. That's where a lot of our problems come in, and where we have to park, we're availability depending on our work schedule. So that's, but that's, the board can't appease everyone, I understand that.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.